I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. One hundred and fifty-seven members are present with the check-in system that we have, so we have more than the necessary quorum to conduct our meeting. First, we'd like to swear in any newly-elected town meeting members. So I'd ask any newly-elected town meeting member to stand, to rise and stand, and Amy will swear you in.
If I could have everyone just raise their right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as town meeting members in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? So help you God. Thank you.
All right. As we start the meeting, as customary, I'd ask you to rise and remain standing and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I may, the moderator in the town of -- please be seated. The moderator in the town of Ipswich, when he began his meeting after the pledge, these were his comments. He said, "And also in honor of George Floyd, Rashad Brooks, and the many other victims of like circumstances, let us concede that when we say 'one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all,' that is only our goal. It is not necessarily our reality." And again, if I ask you to stand, and let's also remember the victims of this COVID-19 pandemic that we're in, and remember to be grateful for the doctors, nurses, first responders, and grocery store workers helping us get through it, and also our deceased, dedicated town meeting members. Now, we usually have resolutions, but because of the situation, we're not doing it at this particular meeting. But I'd ask you to consider those deceased, dedicated town meeting members, and those who have passed in the last year, and for whom we usually present resolutions. So for them, and for all those that have suffered as a result of this pandemic, I'd ask you to rise and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, the clerk will now read the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the annual town meeting, June 29th, 2020, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either constable of the town of Milford in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the auditorium of the Milford High School, 31 West Fountain Street, on the 29th day --
Motion made and seconded, we dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Just to go over some ground rules, because we're in a different situation, we've tried to maintain as much of the social distancing as possible, taking into consideration your health and safety. And what we've got is, I'd ask any town meeting member that wishes to be recognized on any motion to rise and also to yell, "Mr. Moderator." Stay standing, so that we'll make sure that everybody gets the opportunity to speak on any motion that's before the body. We have six microphones. Microphone one, microphone two, microphone three, microphone four. And also, we've got the six-feet distance stated on the floor. We've also got microphone five, which is in the lobby, and then microphone six is outside, to accommodate those people that needed special circumstance. So I'd ask you to stand, and again, we'll line up if you want to speak, and because we have people out in the hall, we have people outside possibly, that you'll get the opportunity to speak on any motion that's before us. Once you speak, I'd ask you to proceed, speak this way, and then proceed in your seats by going around, and also, unfortunately, we have to have some people who are sitting in the middle that have to go over someone else in order to be able to get to the aisle, but I think that's the least of our concerns for the time being. And then also, when we're ready to disperse, rather than everybody going out at the same time, what we're going to do is we're going to do it by aisles, so that there's no congregating of a lot of people in one squad. Okay. So again, we don't have precincts. We have sections. Section one, section two, three, four, five, six, seven. Section eight is out in the lobby. All right? We have monitors in each of those sections, so that when I have to take a standing vote, when the voice vote is not unanimous, you'll stand encountered by the monitors, and then those opposed will rise and stand encountered by the monitors. Okay? Try to remain in your seat unless there's an emergency, and again, just call your attention when you're speaking. We've got that five-minute limitation, unless we get two-thirds of the body to allow you to speak longer. All right? So keep that in mind. Make your presentations as brief as possible. We want to try to get through this meeting in as short a time as possible, but giving everyone the opportunity to speak on any motion. Okay. I'll now recognize Chris Moore, the chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Obviously, with the situation going on, you're not going to have the usual presentation by me. I am going to try to keep this as brief as possible while still hitting the important highlights. We are proposing $111 million of taxpayer money, so it is important that you guys know the facts, and I just want to cover some of the important highlights that has gone on. Obviously, budget process this year was different than any time we've ever seen. Initially, it started out with very positive news, in which the state's financing contribution, called the cherry sheet of state aid, was up about $4 million due to reformulation of Chapter 70 money, which is schools. So we were very excited. We were doing our budgeting, and then obviously, the world changed. With that being said, we had to scramble. Great work was done by the Finance Committee, the finance team, town administrator, and the selectmen, in order to redo, basically, and department heads, excuse me, to redo the budget from what we thought was going to be there to what we now think is going to be there, because right now, we still don't know. We still have not received any direction from the state on what funding is going to be for the year. The state basically just passed a one-month spending of July's budget, so that the state can continue business on July 1st. And basically, that number is the 2020 number, so last year's July budget. So obviously, everything has increased with raises and costs, and we're going off last July's one-month budget going forward. And until the state gets together, their budget will probably be going month-to-month, which unfortunately, is not easy for us to do budgeting-wise. And the financial team is going to continue to do the hard work in order to be able to deliver the services that Milford needs. To highlight a couple of the things, as I mentioned, the July 2020 budget is about a $2.5 million contribution to that town. That was the amount from last year, so that's what we'll receive this year. So that will allow us with cash flow to be able to continue to provide the services that we do in town, along with our local receipts. We've made some assumptions on local receipts. Hotel taxes, we reduced by 40% on what we thought the income was going to be, in order to get an idea budget-wise. Obviously, without any hotels open, that income is significantly decreased, and we accounted for that. There's a 5% increase in health insurance this year. That's our assumption. That is actually a very good number, but when you talk about the amount of people that we have for insurance, 5% still is a significant increase, and that has to be addressed. We also -- not removed, we reduced, excuse me, our capital expenditures. We were budgeting $1.75 million for capital projects, such as purchases of equipment, HVAC systems, anything in our town that we would do to improve our infrastructure. We've always committed significant money to that, but we've had to reduce that significantly, and we're really looking at about a $500,000 expenditure for infrastructure. So departments are going to have to adjust accordingly with what's important. We are also still maintaining, or trying to maintain, excuse me, a $3.8 million levy capacity. I always say that number, and people wonder what that is. That is the number that we are taxing our taxpayers below what we are legally allowed to. A lot of people will call it taxpayer relief. That's what I like to call it. And that we're trying to maintain, because in these tough times of people being unemployed and, you know, hard times on work, we're trying to make sure that our taxpayers are not hit with a tremendous increase on their tax bills, because we went and lowered that levy adjustment number. So for the time being, we're trying to maintain that, which I think is very important for the taxpayers of Milford. We've also talked about the possible use of stabilization in the future, if we need to. We have saved for capital projects like schools, or basically rainy-day things that might happen to this town. We've been very diligent about saving to that account, and that account is available for us to tap into if we need to. I know that I'm committed to doing everything I can to make sure that no services are cut back in this town, and there are no layoffs. Obviously, there's a point that we can go to about pulling out of the stabilization. It is a piggy bank that we can tap into, but it is not a continuous source of revenue. So I think it's very important that if stabilization is going to be used, that we don't look at that, that we're going to be doing it on a continuous basis. This is a once-in-a-lice-time, let's hope, situation, that we have that ability to use that. So some of the articles we have here. Article two, there's a 0% increase being proposed, except for top level, they have a 2.5% increase. Article three, elected officials, 0% increase. Article four, this is the budget. Article four, we're proposing a budget of $111,199,158. That is a 3.5% increase from last year. I think department heads need to be complimented on their work in trimming down their budgets, getting their budgets to be in a place where they can still maintain their workforce and their services, but cutting fat where they could. And I just want to compliment the great work that they did on that. And I want to compliment the great work of the Finance Committee and the financial team and the selectmen in working with these department heads in order to be able to achieve what I think is a really great number, and I think it works. When you do all of our calculations with what I've said, and you do the articles that we have tonight, we're looking at approximately $100,000 surplus between what we take in and what we spend. So on a $111 million budget, that's pretty tight. So we really don't have a lot of room here. And the most important thing that I want to stress to everyone is, this budget is going to be very fluid. We're going to have to adapt as things happen with the state, whether revenue goes up, revenue goes down, state aid goes up, state aid goes down. We're going to need to adapt. And I think Milford's in a very good position to roll with the punches, and I think we're going to be successful, and I think we're going to be a lot more successful than other towns around us that you're reading about on the news. So, thank you very much.
Before I forget, and we're starting the i's and crossing the t's, we dispense with the reading of the articles and warrant, but we forgot to have Amy read the officer's return.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Massachusetts, date June 17th, 2020. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Michael Pagetti, police chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. One other report is the Reno Deluzio, the chairman of the Town Meeting Study Committee, wanted me to mention that his report has been sent to every town meeting member that are in your package with the warrant and the report of the Finance Committee. So rather than presenting the report to you tonight, you've received the written report of the Town Meeting Study Committee. Okay. Let's proceed with Article two. Mr. Rhodes, I'd ask you also, when you come up to the stage, please identify yourself and also what precinct you're in, even though we're not using precincts, so that everybody knows who you are. And speaking from microphone two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen. My name is Harold Rhodes. I'm in precinct two, and I am the chairman, I am your chairman of the Personnel Board. Article two, as follows. I, Harold Rhodes, move that the town vote to amend the wage and salary schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position levels and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020.
Rick?
Rick, would you like me to continue reading?
The motion is made and seconded, we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion, since it's exactly as appears in the warrant and the Finance Committee's report. Any vote can be heard. If not, the question comes on the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Harold?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very briefly, as Chris Moore, the Finance Chairman, said, and as Zach Taylor has asked, the Personnel Board did what it could to lower expenses, and typically, every year, all 100-plus full-time employees get a 2.5, well, typically get a 2.5% cost-of-living adjustment. This year, only the top, I think, six top-level, top-step employees will be getting that. All other persons will not be getting the cost of living. This is saving the town approximately $37,000.
Any other vote can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I have it here.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this year, the Board of Selectmen are recommending a 0% salary adjustment for the two full-time elected officials, town clerk and highway surveyor, and for all other elected officials.
All right. Right. The motion on behalf of Selectman Walsh, we tried to streamline this, and rather than the motion maker approaching the podium, Selectman Walsh has moved that the town vote to fix the salary and the compensation of all elected officials of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the general laws as follows. Town clerk, motion made and seconded, we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion, all because it's exactly as appears in your warrant and the Finance Committee report. Any vote can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Selectman Walsh.
Amy has the -- basically, ladies and gentlemen, that took care. The Board of Selectmen has made a decision that we do not want to have any salary increases for elected officials within the community. So we thank you for your support on that.
Any other vote can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I ask that the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee, and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately. That if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report. The amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking each of them up individually.
Okay. I'm going to need that motion, Chris. Motion has been made and seconded, that the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee, and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately. That if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report. The amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually. So I'll ask if there is any town meeting member that wishes to remove any line item from the Finance Committee report. Okay. Please approach, please approach the microphone. And speaking from microphone three.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to remove account 300, School Department, from Article four, to be discussed separately and individually.
Mr. Erickson requests removal of item number 300. Next.
Jamie Wheelock, I'd like to remove line item 210, please.
Line item 210 is removed. Any other voter wish to remove any line item? If not, the question comes upon the motion of the Finance Committee. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Now we'll consider those items separately that have been removed. The first one being item, line item number 300. What is the motion that you wish to make under line item 300? Mr. Erickson?
I move to amend account 300, School Department, to $52,676,720.
Motion to incorporate under account line item number 300, the School Department, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, and good evening. When the School Committee began the budget process in January, we were very optimistic. Due to the Student Opportunity Act passed in November of 2019, it was expected that we would receive a significant increase in Chapter 70 state funding, as our chair of the Finance Committee mentioned previously. The number of new initiatives were being moved forward to help with the challenges that our district faces, with many being compliance-related. When COVID-19 hit, it was quickly understood by all involved that the best we could hope for, until further decisions on the state and federal levels have been made, was to move forward with a level service budget, which is the number that the School Committee voted for based on predictions and calculations by our Finance Director. Shortly after this vote, our superintendents met with the Finance Director and the Chair of the Finance Committee Educational Subcommittee, in which they were asked to further cut the School Department budget by an additional $300,000. The administration and School Committee were able to accomplish this task, and ultimately voted to present the $52,676,720 as our FY21 budget request. As required by law, a public hearing was held on this proposed budget on June 18th. No resident objected or even presented an opinion at that time. This $52,676,720 budget proposal was presented to the Finance Committee on June 15th as part of a balanced budget. Unexpectedly, in a split decision, the Finance Committee voted to cut the school budget by an additional $200,000. Our School Committee met this past Thursday, June 25th, to discuss the ramifications of this cut. It was clear in that discussion that if this motion to approve an additional $200,000 is not approved, it will result in a loss of positions within the school district. Likely, three or more teachers, again, based on the discussion we had this past Thursday. Once again, it's important to recognize, as our Finance Director has stated, that this slight but necessary increase still results in a balanced budget. I urge you to support this motion.
Any other vote can be heard.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Please approach microphone two. Identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Vescanti, precinct eight. The School Committee is playing on your motions, telling you that if this is not approved, that some teachers are going to lose their job. That is not the case. They're using that to get you to approve this extra money. They can find other ways to cut, but they won't, because there is no incentive for the School Committee to cut anywhere else. Their irresponsible, uncontrolled spending needs to stop. They know that when they go to the Finance Committee and cry to the Finance Committee for money, the Finance Committee, as it has done in every year past, rolls over and gives them whatever they want. The Finance Committee has to man up and learn how to say no. You can do that tonight. Don't be worried about teachers losing their job. That's a ploy by the School Department to play on your emotions and get you to approve this extra money. Please do not get sucked in. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard?
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Jerry Hyatt, precinct three, Finance Committee member for 30-plus years, as best I can keep count. I'm going to rise and talk about this $200,000 that's been kicked around for a couple weeks by the FinCom and the School Committee, and I just want to take a moment. I don't normally write my speeches, but I felt pretty compelled to try to do this as close as I can possibly. Good evening, town meeting members. I am Jerry Hyatt from precinct three, and a longstanding member of the Finance Committee, chairman several times. As we get started, let's take a minute to reflect on the roles and responsibilities of my fellow town meeting members. Your role as town meeting member is particularly important to the town of Milford, as nothing happens until you approve the articles presented here tonight. Town meeting as a body has its discretion, the power to grant or deny employee raises, approve contracts, specific policies that affect town business in the upcoming fiscal year, and in some cases, three or even five years. Your role is very significant and very important. I look at a town meeting role as probably the most important position in town. As I come to you before tonight concerning the issue of the $200,000 for the School Department, I would like with you to review the role of the Finance Committee. Our role in the Finance Committee is to take charge and submit to you, town meeting members, a budget that qualifies, that equally weighs the town's needs as a whole. Our goal is to present to you a budget that addresses the needs of all the citizens of Milford on a level playing field. That requires us as FinCom to take into consideration budget requests from all departments, big or small, on an equal needs basis, absent any political conflict, any political interest. Under normal conditions, this is no easy task. Under the current COVID-19 pandemic, the task is even more difficult, and as the days and weeks and months progress, it is going to get much more difficult. The budget process started in late January, with some subcommittee meetings being held in February. Please keep this in mind, as we meet tonight, June 29th, almost five months later since when we first started this process. This didn't just happen overnight. The Finance Committee is made up of 15 members of tax-paying residents of the town. I myself have served on the committee, like I said, for 30 years. Chuck Mislovich, 44 years. Jack Tenero, Esquire, I think it's 40-plus years, I may be off one or two there. Aldo Cheki, a former superintendent of schools, 25-plus years. Bob Davida and Phil Searmickoli, I believe the number is right around 35 years. And Joyce Levine, the only lady that still exists on the committee, has been there for 25 years. Lot of experience, lot of time. The role of the Finance Committee is not easy. It's not playing Santa Claus with taxpayer monies, and should not be taken lightly or for granted. Our members spend countless hours reviewing and writing reports, holding and attending meetings, most recently, a Monday night Zoom meeting that lasted for three hours and 30 minutes, till 10:30, getting ready for this town meeting. There are several issues to keep in mind concerning the $200,000. As the former speaker noted, I think it's a pretty nominal amount, considering the $53 million that's being considered at this town meeting, plus the other sources that they have of revenue. that's being considered at this town meeting, plus the other sources that they have of revenue. The $200,000 is a very small portion in relation to the $53 million budget. The details of the math are, it's .38%, less than a half a percent of the total town's appropriation for schools. Second, if this is remitted or allowed, the budget as permitted, as presented, the budget as presented tonight will be invalid, out of balance, and require a process to revisit all departments to replace the $200,000 given to the School Department. The previous Speaker that talked about a balanced budget, this throws it off. I.e., where are we going to get the $200,000? Reduce the Library $50,000? How's that going to go? Reduce the Public Safety $50,000? Reduce the Parks Department $50,000? Or reduce General Government Town Hall by $50,000? This action can be very difficult, as most departments have been cooperative and already reduced their budget to meet the requested original guidelines as provided.
Jerry, just remember we have a five-minute limit to speakers, so if you can just try to wrap it up.
I've got half a page.
Okay, half a page.
I'll wrap it right up.
Thirty seconds.
Third, consider the aftermath of this year's budget process. One of our outstanding professional, hard-working Finance Committee members and School Subcommittee Chairman was singled out and not reappointed during the most recent Selectmen Select Boards meeting, meeting in which four current members were reappointed and one new member was replacing Jeff Nero, the Subcommittee Chairman. It was no very surprise to him and any of the members of the Finance Committee. They worked tirelessly to formulate the budget for the schools and only have to be uncooperative and unresponsive to their requests that date back all the way to February of this year. Two, and just, this is not new situation with the Finance Committee. We've seen this before, and I don't want everybody in town meeting to understand what's happening here. Okay, two previous School Committee Chairmans ended up leaving the Finance Committee for their own reasons. Mark Shane, hard-working, very smart guy, on top of everything. Mike Skiavi, another hard-working guy, an engineer for Raytheon, very specific, rare detail. My point is, too bad, coupled with the most recent failure to reappoint Jeff Nero, what a great loss to the town. The expertise and legacy knowledge of your service to the town flushed down the drain. This type of harassment and uncooperative behavior should not be allowed to continue. The request to add $200,000 is example of the failure of the School Department to cooperate. So in closing, I ask you to reject the request for the $200,000 for three compelling reasons, as summarized. Please show your support for the hard work and great job getting the town of Milford in the solid financial position that we are. No debt exclusions, no overrides, and sound taxation policy. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? You can address it from microphone three there. Any other voter who wants to speak, just get in line behind the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brendan Ricker. I'm from Precinct 6. I just first want to ask, Mr. Moderator, for the people out in the hallway, how are you getting notifications that they want to speak or?
Yes, I have a monitor.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. In relation to the matter at hand, I'm not sure if this is a personal retribution towards the School Committee, but what we are ultimately talking about is if we want to open our economy, if we want to get our jobs back, we need to have kids in schools. If the School Committee needs this $200,000, which they will, because they are going to be responsible for paying for the PPE and additional transportation and other measures to have a functioning schools, this is going to be a drop in the bucket compared to what it's actually going to cost the town, the state, and federal governments. Let's approve this money now. We'll figure it out as we go. I do appreciate the Finance Committee for their hard work on all this. I appreciate the School Committee and their hard work on all this. But this is about our kids' education, who have been out of the classroom the past four months. It's incredibly difficult to learn at the best of circumstances, never mind being away from their teachers. This money represents our children and our future, and I personally like investing in our future. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Moderator, I rise. Harold Rhodes, Precinct 2. I rise to convince everyone as our town meeting members to not support this $200,000 increase. As the numbers stand today, at $52,492,000, that represents a 3.8% increase. That's certainly among the very largest, if not the largest, increase of the town budget. If we were to add on that $200,000, that would bring it to 4.2%, yet again among. The Finance Committee and the Finance Department has gone to all the departments, and all of the departments have done their job as team players to reduce their budget. For example, Selectmen General Expenses, down 48%. Fair Housing Personal Expenses, down 17%. Public Property Personal Services, down 6.4%. Tax Collector Personal Services, down 3.5%. Blackstone Valley, down 3.2%. Health Department Personal Services, down 2.7%. Assessors Personal Services, down 1.7%. The Fire Department is holding four positions to be filled, so as they can give back. Across every department except for the schools, everybody's been a team player on this budget. It's important for the School Committee, the school district, to accept this. And if they need to spend that $200,000 so that they don't lose those three teachers, they have other sources of revenue. Most specifically, the School Department receives School Choice Receiving in Funds. Those are for children who have moved into the district. That number is over $800,000. They could easily take the $200,000 out of that and remain with their teachers. I ask you all, town meeting members, to support the Finance Committee, to support the Finance Department, and reject this amendment.
All right, I'll recognize the Speaker in the hall. Please identify yourself as you're speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's Jennifer Parsons, School Committee Member, Town Meeting Member. I had prepared some words tonight, and to be honest, what I have to share after hearing the previous speakers is I feel like I'm sitting in a story that's told from two different perspectives. We have the FinCom perspective and the School Department perspective, and they're very different, and the story that's been told thus far is one perspective. In our Budget Kickoff Meeting with the FinCom Ed Subcommittee this past January, Dr. McIntyre introduced the budget, saying, "This is the year of the teacher." Over the past couple of years, I have heard repeatedly from multiple FinCom members how important it was to ensure that the community was informed about the staggering growth in the Milford Public Schools. Increased growth in students means increased need for staff. What we have been sharing for several years now is that our increased enrollment of 450 students over the past eight years technically should have us asking for another school building, never mind resulting in the need for additional staff members. At this point, after multiple meetings between the School Committee, School Administration, and the Finance Committee, there will be no new teaching positions. Our original pre-pandemic budget, when we were still very hopeful that this would be the year of the teacher, was already cut dramatically by $2.5 million. We were asked to partner with the town and to do our part in assisting Milford financially in these unprecedented, financially turbulent times. And with great reservation, we made more cuts. Yes, the School Department made cuts. The last cut was during a joint meeting this past May 21st with many FinCom members and the Town Finance Director present. We were told that the town needed to cut $500,000 out of its budget in order to, for the overall town budget to be balanced. We were asked to take $300,000 out of this total $500,000 request from the School Department. The School Committee agreed that by cutting this final $300,000, we would be doing our part as the largest department in the town. That decision brought our budget down to $52,676,000. What will that loss of nearly $3 million now do to our schools? We will see impossibly large teaching caseloads for our most vulnerable students, including our special education programs and our English language development programs. Class sizes in general will rise, and in some cases, course offerings at the high school that have been a source of pride for all types of learners will not be available to our students. All 30 educator positions that were requested because of our growth, because of our need to have consistent improvement, are now off the table in the name of what the FinCom and Finance Director asked of us, which was to create a level service budget. When your needs rise, level service is woefully inadequate. It means if you had 100 teachers last year, you get 100 teachers this year. If you add in hundreds of students, which we have, which the data is beginning to demonstrate as a pattern in Milford, this is not level service if you do not increase the number of teachers that you have. Once the pandemic hit, we knew we would be in an impossible situation. We knew we would need to do the best that we could in order to stay as level as possible. We all worked collaboratively with the Finance Committee to make this work. Looking around this room tonight and seeing these chairs separated by six feet of space makes me feel so scared and nervous for our students returning to classrooms that will look just like this in the fall. It will require additional staff, additional money, to bring our students up to speed after six months of not being in school. I urge every town meeting member here tonight, please add this $200,000 back into the School Department's budget. Thank you.
If you want to speak, just go in front of a microphone and wait to be recognized. I'm not going to recognize anybody from their seats. You're going to go and stand in the aisle in front of a microphone, and I'm trying to get the speakers that have been standing along us to speak next. Speaker in Precinct, microphone three, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Jeff Nero, Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member, and now former FinCom Member, former Chair of the FinCom School Subcommittee, after my non-renewal last week by the Selectmen. This body just approved a 0% increase for all the personnel listed in Article 2 and Article 3. 0%. I think that's important. This is important, as we discussed this request, in terms of being a team player in town. Let's go back to what some of the previous speakers have just talked about. January 2020, School Committee, School Committee, keep in mind, the FinCom gets the budget after the School Committee reviews it. You know, so we think the School Committee already reviewed it with the fine-tuned com, and they had all the questions for the administration, whatever the questions are. But no, we got the budget, and not counting any new initiatives. This request was for a 5.8% or a $2.9 million increase over fiscal year 20, at $53,452,000. 5.8% increase. In February, the FinCom Subcommittee looked over the budget. We got the line items from the School Committee. We said, "All right, can you give us a breakdown of the 2.9% increase?" And, you know, looking at line by line, we found a lot of irregularities. You know, irregularities, just, we want to make sure the taxpayers of Milford are paying for the appropriate use of the funds. You know, because as everybody at this meeting knows, or maybe does not know, the School Committee can do whatever they want with the funding. They have total autonomy. They can take money from power, and they can pay a salary. They can do whatever they want with the money. So we identified many, many line items that we needed clarity on. This report, if everybody is interested, is posted on the Town Share Drive and is available for anyone that wants to request it. Examples of irregularities include the purchase of four vans and hiring of four drivers. That wasn't approved or vetted through the FinCom Capital Purchase Department, as every other department must follow. You know, every capital purchase goes through the Capital FinCom, except for the schools. The school had extra money. They decided, "Well, we have extra money. Let's buy four vans." FinCom never saw it. Town meeting never saw it. That's just, that was a question for us. Where did the funding come from? Over $100,000 addition to the school maintenance budget for what the school called Phase 2 of an HVAC project. I want this body to remember, last year, this town meeting approved Phase 1 of an HVAC project through a town meeting article, and the schools arbitrarily added $107,000 to their expense budget as part of that $2.9 million increase. Therefore, bypassing the capital request procedure, bypassing town meeting approval, bypassing any kind of discussion about it, you know, and instead just put it into the budget. That's not right. And we asked a question about that. Did not get a great question. Multiple, multiple salary increases in excess of 10%. You know, so we said, "Well, why is it 10%? You know, why is there 10% increase in salary? We don't understand that." You know, the town, 2.5%, 3%, the explanation we got that, well, that's a step raise increase and the cost of living. That's pretty good. You know, I don't know who else in the department, I don't know whether the department is getting that, especially since we just heard Article 2 and Article 3, 0% increase. So, in March 2020, COVID-19 hits. Finance Department and the Selectmen provide a directive to all departments, to all the departments, tighten their belts, no new hires, level fund your expenses. Level fund your expenses means whatever your funding was for fiscal year 20, that's what your funding is for fiscal year 21. Pretty straightforward. In March, April, and May of 2020, between the FinCom Subcommittee and the School Committee, we went back and forth for additional requests for clarification of the budget line items from the February request. You know, we put several line items in February. We said, "Can you give us an explanation as to what this spending is for?" We are still waiting for the explanation to this day. And they're not hard requests. You know, not hard requests. You know, it was, say, there's a 10% increase in spending for electricity. The request was, "Well, what's the actual? Can you tell us what the actual?" No, we did not get that response. And May 2020, after all the town departments, all the town departments scrutinized their budgets with, the School Department again submits an adjusted budget. Now, this is, keep in mind, this is after COVID. This is after the town gave them directive to level fund your expenses. This is after the town said to tighten your belts. The School Department submits a budget $98,000 higher than the budget they submitted in January. You know, obviously missed the memo from the Finance Department. School Department commits to lower their spend by $300,000. I agree with Jen Parsons. The school agreed to lower their spend by $300,000. The school did not lower their spend by $300,000. Instead, the school supplemented the $300,000 by moving $200,000 from the School Choice money into the budget. Keep in mind, any position, everybody in this room should know, any position that is funded through Choice Dollars or a grant or anything else, granted, the budget is paid from that grant money, but the town picks up the benefits. If that position is not funded again, the town picks up the unemployment. So that's important to note. So, the school did not commit, the school committed to lower their spend and did not. Please remember, and also remember, that $300,000 that we asked them to reduce, $107,000 of that was that capital article that should have came before this body. That should have came before us. So, FinCom approved in June, the FinCom approved reducing the Milford Schools budget by $200,000, the additional revenue that they brought into the budget. No other department in town has that option to bring revenue in. The school has total autonomy in that money. They can spend the money any way they want. You know, the police department can't hire another police officer. Keep in mind, if the school hires a position out of that revenue funding, again, as I just said, the town is on the hook for the benefits. Town is on the hook for the benefits, and what the school does, they roll the position into the next year's budget ask.
Okay. I'm going to have to start enforcing the five minutes.
Two more lines.
We'll be on the five minutes that we're allowed.
Lastly, and as Mr. Hiatt said, this is 4%, this is less than, less than a half percent of their overall budget. If the schools follow the town's directive initially in level funding their expenses, the $200,000 is easily absorbed in the budget. Level funding of their expenses in heat and electricity alone account for $50,000. That's just two accounts out of the entire school budget. Lastly, the schools have also been asked to provide what will be returned to the town from the $50,553,500 budget from this year. Now that the schools have been closed for four months, but as Jen Parsons- Now that the schools have been closed for four months, but as Jen Parsons just said, they've been closed for six months, the superintendent is on record saying that it will be, probably be in the low five figures, if that. No substitute, low utilities, no crossing odds, no buses, et cetera. Thank you for your time. Please defeat this amendment.
Next, voter at microphone three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. My name is Megan Hornberger. I'm a town meeting member in precinct.
Whoops.
Hello? Okay. In Precinct Seven, I'm also the Vice Chair of the School Committee. There are many, many things I want to say after the prior comments, but I'm just going to focus on a couple. Mr. Hyatt, I certainly agree with you. It is a very hardworking group. I can't tell you how many hours we have all spent together and how many hundreds potentially of emails that have gone back and forth, so I will certainly agree with that. If you think for a second that the school committee is determining who sits on the Finance Committee, we have no jurisdiction over that, so that's not something that I can comment on. And I think, Jeff, I hope you feel the same. I think that Mr. Nero and I work very collaboratively together. In terms of enrollment, it was 250 additional students this year, and we need to service those students. Our class size have increased tremendously, and we want to address that in this coming year. I certainly agree there are process improvements that could be better. The vans were purchased at a cost savings to the town. I think that was communicated but not followed through the right process. I think we do need process improvements. I do not think those process improvements should come at the detriment of our students, especially right now in this unprecedented time. Thank you.
Okay. Microphone two, Mr. Viscanti again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Viscanti, Precinct Eight, regarding the comments made by the previous speaker and the thrice-removed previous speaker, who talked about the need for teachers. I deal in facts, not emotions. So let's look at some facts. Milford has one of the lowest teacher-to-student ratios in the state, and the high school has one of the highest square footage space per student in the state. So what does this mean? This means we have more than enough teachers and we have more than enough space to educate our students. I'm not one to criticize without offering some what I would call constructive criticism. And I'm thinking the school department can pick up some money by using some of the money that they're not spending on cleaning the grit and grime off the floor that you're standing on right now. I'm sure they could save, use some of that money that they're saving by not cleaning not only the floor, but this entire building. Walk through this building. Look at the grime and grease and dust that has not been touched in this building for years. Use some of that money if you need to. What does this all come down to? Plain and simple. Your selectmen have, on numerous occasions, indicated that we are running a business, this town is running a business here now, and we should treat it like a business. Well, if you want to treat it like a business, then this is what you need to do. You need to look at your management and clean house and get new management in here to do things the right way. Find the money. The money is there. The money is there. Please vote no on this. Don't be led by emotions. Plenty of teachers, plenty of space. Those are the facts. There's nothing emotional about that. Plain and simple, clear facts. The math doesn't lie. Thank you.
The speaker at microphone three.
Good evening. Donna Nero, Precinct Eight. I'm also going to ask you to not support this amendment for the following reasons, that all of which have actually been mentioned before. The school can use other money to support that $200,000. That $200,000 represents .004% of the budget. It is miniscule. It is a miniscule amount of money, and we have $2.3 million coming out of general funds to pay for students who are choicing out of Milford. Those come out of our taxpayers' budget, again, out of the general funds. That's money that is over and above what the school department is including in their budget, that never gets counted in. Additionally, the school choice in money is over $800,000. It's estimated to be about $880,000 for fiscal year 2021. If the school is in that much of distress, then why aren't they pulling that money out of those funds? They have the discretion to use that money at their will? Let them use that money. We are in unprecedented times. We are all financially strapped. Many of us are unemployed. We don't want any extra money coming out of our accounts or into our tax bills. So additionally, in Article Two and Three, we heard about 0% increase. The town clerk, the highway surveyor, all other elected officials will not be receiving any increase. Yet we have employees of the school department who will be receiving increases of 10%. How can that be justified in these times? And how can one consider them being a team player when they haven't made those efforts? I respectfully ask you and urge you tonight to make the most fiscally responsible decision for us as a town and for all of us as taxpayers to please reject this amendment. Thank you.
All right. Right here. No, right here.
I'm Margaret Maya from Precinct Two. I would please like to move the motion.
Move the previous question.
Move the question.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to move the previous question. Requires a two-thirds vote and is not debatable. All those in favor of moving a previous question manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor of moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Section, section one. Chris?
Eleven, four, four against.
Eleven, four, four against. Section two.
Fourteen, four, eight against.
Fourteen, four, eight against. Section three.
Ten in favor, six against.
Section three, ten in favor, six opposed. Section four.
Twelve in favor.
Would you repeat that, please?
Twelve in favor.
Twelve in favor, five opposed. Section five.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Section five, six in favor, three opposed. Section six.
Three in favor, five opposed.
Three in favor, five opposed. Section eight, out in the hall.
Nope, seven. Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry. Section seven.
Eight in favor, eleven opposed.
Section seven, eight in favor, eleven opposed. Section eight.
Eighteen in favor, twenty-seven opposed.
Eighteen in favor, twenty-seven opposed.
I'm not sure if we have anyone outside.
There's no one outside, no. One more opposed outside? All right, so that'll be eighty-two and seventy. All right. All right, 152 members having voted to move the previous question, eighty-two in favor. It has not received the necessary two-thirds. Amy, do you agree with that? I apologize, I'm a little, I don't have my sheet of paper. It hasn't received the necessary two-thirds, so we'll continue debate on the motion to establish the line item in the budget for the school department at increasing it by $200,000. Yes, the form in precinct in section two. Microphone two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Delmore, Precinct Eight. I've been in finance for most of my life, most recently as a CFO, and one thing that I always tell the people that I'm working with is the only thing you control in life is what you spend. And certainly, that is most true right now. We don't even have a clear understanding of what the budget's going to be from the state, from the federal government, nor has the school committee, to the best of my knowledge, put out any clear plan as to what education's going to look like in September. As far as classroom numbers, learning from home is still going to be an option in September from what I understand, so that would probably greatly impact classroom numbers. And I also would be curious if the school department has looked at retiring teachers as a result of fear coming back into the classroom. A lot of our teachers are older. At the end of the day, I don't see it being fiscally wise to add another $200,000 to the budget, as small as it may seem in the grand scheme of things. We should hold on to every dollar we have. I would imagine this could always be reevaluated as a special town meeting if need be, but with everything up in the air the way that it is right now, I think that we should defeat this.
Microphone three.
B. Wheelock, Precinct Five, and I'll just help out those school committee people by reminding everybody in the room and in the hallway that if you chose to not support Article Nine, you could come up with a $380,000 to get closer to the money that the school committee wants. And I know we're not supposed to be talking about other articles later on, but there is other financial items on the rest of the warrant where we could just solve this $200,000 problem or the bulk of it. So it's not as dire as what the FinCom was saying about we have to cut 50 from the library, 50 from, and 50 and 50 from all those other places. You could dig up this Article Nine money and redistribute that.
Next in line, at microphone three.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Marais, Precinct Three. As you've heard from previous speakers tonight, our school department recognizes the challenges that the town faces during this unprecedented time, and it's worked closely with all stakeholders to cut the budget several times throughout this process. In fact, our schools have managed the budget conservatively for several years, too conservatively, in my opinion. Per pupil spending is well below the state average. Even though we have larger percentages of high-need students and our enrollment numbers continue to rise, we can and should do better. Budgets are moral documents. What we fund is what we value as a community. Now is not the time to nickel and dime our schools. I ask you to support the motion to reinstate the $200,000.
Mr., next speaker in microphone three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, John Erickson, School Committee Chair. When I hear some of the previous comments, some of them demonstrate a serious lack of understanding about how our school budget works and operates. Some things that need to be dispelled are the percent salary increases. When I hear that Article Two didn't get any, some of them did. When I hear that elected officials didn't, we can control that. There are other bargaining units in town which did get raises, which were conveniently not included in the previous discussions. With that said, we have some serious challenges if we were to receive a level service budget. Our Assistant Superintendent for Business jotted down some of the effects of a level service budget, which is before we agreed to find a way to cut the budget by $300,000. And when I hear by previous speakers that we didn't cut this budget by $300,000, we delayed spending, well, that's still a cut in the budget. When I hear that that's not a cut in the budget, that tells me you just want to cut positions. And I think that's got some motivations that are not in the best interest of the town. If I can share with you just a few statistics of the effects of the level service budget, which is not what we're moving forward. We had an initiative for a special education teacher for $60,000 at Shining Star. Without getting that, it simply increases the class size at our preschool. We had an initiative for a special education teacher at Brookside for $60,000. Without that, it's a 16.9% enrollment increase in student ratio. At Memorial, we had another special education teacher initiative, again, an increase in enrollment and student teacher ratio. Woodland, we had two special education teachers proposed, and again, increase in enrollment, student ratio. Grade four, 27 to 1; grade five, 18 to 1. There's a long list here. I won't continue with it, but again, I want to emphasize that these compliance issues were with a level service request. We don't have that request. We've cut that request by $300,000 additional. The $200,000 that we were cut on top of this 300 is just challenges that will be severely detrimental to our students. You know, students go to school for 12 years. There are no wasted years in their education. The challenges this year are greater than ever. We haven't figured out the effects of this pandemic. They're coming back somewhat, missing a good portion of their learning from this year. That's going to be enough challenge to make up, and we're going to be, we're going to be doing so even if this request is approved severely inhibited. So I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to have to start enforcing that. We've had a bylaw that we enacted, just call your attention, and it talks about speaking on a motion. And we're supposed to limit the speaker to five minutes, okay? And if he speaks, he or she speaks a second time, you limit it to three minutes. We voted on this a few years back. So again, I'm going to have to start enforcing that. I'm going to have Amy just clock them three minutes or five minutes if they're speaking the second time. Before I recognize a person for the third time, I'm going to try to recognize a person for either the first or the second time. So be aware of that so we can have some more discussion on it. Jen Parsons, I think you're out in the lobby, you want to speak again. You're limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to be very clear that during the month of May, the school committee was asked at the request of the Chair of the FinCom, the FinCom Ed Subcommittee, and the Town's Finance Director to cut $300,000 out of our request. We hemmed, we hawed, we struggled, and we did it. We knew it would impact students, but we did it. We were told the budget would be balanced, and we were told that was the last cut that the school district would have to take out of their budget. There was no heads-up to the school committee or the school department that there would be a request on June 15th to remove an additional $200,000 from the school department's requested budget. I have no data, as the person who is the sitting school committee chair on June 15th, as to why the town requires an additional $200,000. We were not told what it would be used for. All we were told was that our budget for this town would be balanced with our $300,000 share. In response to the comments that questions were not answered by our school committee and our school department, we have dozens and dozens of emails and in-person questions that have been addressed ad nauseam by the school department and the school committee. They have been addressed. It is very important that the voters understand, this school committee and this school department has done everything. And with all due respect for the minute amount of money that people are claiming this is, then the school department shouldn't have to be asked to take that money off of the backs of students. Again, I urge everyone's support of moving that $200,000 back into the school department budget. Thank you.
It's like we're not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this-
Ladies and gentlemen, this, a lot of conversation in this room tonight. As most of you know, I sat on the school committee for nine years, I chaired it for two years. The things that aren't being talked about tonight are the obstacles that the school department deals with on a yearly basis. And I'll give you some examples. In August, we get increased enrollment into our kindergarten classes that take the sizes of the classes and throws them into a downward spiral, and they have to figure out what they have to do. You have children in special education, you have children that require special transportation to get to and from the schools that they have to attend. You could have one student move into this district, and I've seen it, transportation costs $225,000 for the year. And those are just some of the obstacles that the school department deals with on a yearly basis. So I can appreciate all other department heads and what they've done, but there's no other department that deals with the obstacles like the school department does. And they do a really good job at dealing with it and providing a first-quality education to the children. And you've heard me say this for many, many years, if you criticize the Milford Public Schools, you've never been in the Milford Public Schools. But we, as taxpayers in this community, have a right to fund the school department budget properly, so that every child gets educated equally and fairly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other voter can be heard, we've got people wanna be recognized for the third time, uh, and fourth time. I'll recognize Mr. Nero again.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Jeff Nero, Precinct Eight. So, let me address a few things. Um, with all due respect to, to Jen Parsons and to Mr. Walsh, if they think the questions have been answered, I challenge everybody to, to, to download the spreadsheet from the, or request the spreadsheet from the town, from the town seat, and see if the questions have been answered. Mr. Walsh has been copied on every single email. You know, he had a chance to look at and review it, he says, "Okay, yeah, so maybe, maybe I'm wrong," but the questions have not been answered, as far as enrollment goes, you know, and special needs. We heard one school committee member saying 450, we have one school committee member, 250. Another question that we asked of the school committee was, "Can you tell us," you know, because we treat compliance for ELL and special ed very, very seriously. In fact, we pretty much give them a carte blanche. You know, it's like, whatever you need, tell us. We asked the question this year, "Can you tell us the formula?" All right, you have 200 ELL students. What does that mean? Does that mean, does that mean 20 teachers? Does that mean 30 teachers? Give us the formula. Just tell us how you got there. You know, I'm in business, a lot of people in this room are in business, just tell us how you got there, we wanna understand the ratio. It's not hard, you know, it's not hard, you're asking me for 20 teachers, you're asking me for, you know, you heard Mr. Erickson say, "Oh, we need this special ed here, we need this..." Fine, show us the math. We will support it 100%. Show us the math. We have not received it. It's not a hard ask, you know, you're developing your budget based on need. Show us the formula, show us the math. I, I don't think it's a hard ask, I think it's a fair ask. I think it's a fair ask for every taxpayer in the town, I think it's a fair ask to every single member on the school committee to ask that question as well. Show us what the need is. You know, you say compliance, you say ELL, you say sped, great, just show us why, show us why. If it's 200 teachers, and, and I've said this publicly, I've said this publicly, on, on the floor, if that means 200 additional teachers, we're gonna support it if it means compliance. Show us the math, just show us the justification. We haven't seen it. Thank you.
Okay, I, I see that Superintendent McIntyre wishes to address the meeting, so I'll recognize Superintendent McIntyre.
Good evening, my name is Kevin McIntyre, and I stand humbly before you to speak about the, um, issue at hand. A, a number of, of our speakers has, have stressed the, um, rise in enrollment. In this past year, um, the last day of school, we were educating 4,505 students.
Excuse me one second, yes?
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible) are not recognized by the company. He does not, uh, (inaudible).
Uh, he's not a resident of town in Milford, requires unanimous consent? Is somebody objecting?
(inaudible).
Okay, we'll recess the meeting, we'll recess the meeting and allow Mr. McIntyre to address the meeting for five minutes. Anybody that were in recess, allowing him to address it for five minutes is a courtesy to the superintendent of our school system.
(inaudible).
If the meeting is recessed for five minutes, Mr. McIntyre has five minutes to speak. You can go up, well, you don't wanna wander under these conditions, but I'll give him five minutes to speak. Amy, time the five minutes.
Moderator.
Mr. McIntyre is recognized.
Thank you. A number of our speakers, our, our members of the school committee, have shared the rising enrollment in the Milford Public Schools. At the end of this year, we had 4,505 students, which I believe is the highest, uh, number we've ever had during the course of this year. Not only has our student population risen, but the composition of that population has changed dramatically over the last decade. More than half of our students are considered high-needs, which means they fall into one of three categories: students with special needs, English learners, or economically disadvantaged. All three of these groups often require special education services, which requires smaller groups and is also a little more expensive to educate students that fall into the high-needs Last week, we received guidance from the state. This guidance requested all school districts, including the Milford Public Schools, to create three plans for the upcoming school year due to the pandemic. The first plan required students coming back, or most, most or all of the students coming back with safety requirements. The second plan was a hybrid model where students will come in for in-person learning, and another group will be completing remote learning, and a final plan with students completing remote learning. At any one time during the 2020, 2021 school year, we will probably engage in two of those three plans. We're also required to provide logistical support, cleaning, and sanitizing, as well as providing PPE for every employee, as well as students if they lose mass during the course of the day. This requires resources. This year, more than any, Every Dollar Matters. I'm gonna say that again, this year, more than any, Every Dollar Matters. There is so much uncertainty, more than any time in my 25-plus-year career in education. I've never been in a situation where we haven't had a budget settled at this point in the year. I am humbly asking for the community's support of the school budget. Again, we are in unprecedented times, we have our highest enrollments, and our enrollment, the composition of our enrollment is, is composed of a number of students that have high needs. I appreciate the community's ongoing support for education, and I appreciate your support this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we're back in session after the recess, and I'll recognize the speaker behind, Mr. Visconti. You've spoken three times, Michael, wait till somebody else speaks once or twice.
Michael Agajanian, Precinct Two, also a school committee member. Have a little thing to say. First of all, there seems to be some process and issues between FinCom and the school committee. Uh, I apologize. Uh, as a new school committee member, I really want to work on that relationship, and I commit to it. I have a deep, deep background in finance, and there's nothing more important to me than making sure that these communications in town work well. So number two, so facts, we're talking about facts. So, again, as a new school committee member, I started to dig in to how we fund our kids. And we're talking about level funding at the summary level, big, big number, right? And so I decided, hey, well, I talked to our superintendent, hey, what do we fund our kids, per child? And so when I think of level funding, I think of that individual child. So as a town, we've been told, by the town, to commit to level funding, so I look at that kid and say, "Hey, you know what, let's level fund them." So here's, here's a few facts. Uh, 2014, we funded our children 10.4% less than the state average. Now, 2014, 10% less than the state average. Milford is not an average place where I live. I love Milford. 2018, it increased. We fund our children 11.4% less than the state average. Now, since 2018, as Kevin said, our enrollment's been going up. So now we're deliberating to further reduce our school budget, which means that if we do this, that going into 2020 and 21, if we continue this trend, we're gonna be funding that one child more than 13% less per kid. I, as a resident of Milford, do not stand for that, because we are not a below-average community. So I think we should be funding the school system and moving up slowly to get it to an appropriate level to match what we need for resources. I won't short-change our kids. I will be standing yes to support this vote, and I hope to see everybody here supporting yes to support this vote in our school system. Thank you.
Any other voter besides, uh, Mr., uh, microphone four?
Thank you. David Consigli, uh, town meeting, Member at Lodge. I don't know about anybody else in this room tonight, but I'm seeing nothing but history of friction between the school department and the finance committee. And it shouldn't be that way. And it seems to always fall down to the aspects of line items and budgets. Every department in this town has a line item budget. School committee should be no different. Yes, we understand that it can be fluid and it can change. But I don't understand why we go through finance committee chairpersons to the school committee, and every few years, they get totally frustrated and either quit, or they don't get reappointed because of the friction. That's a problem. And I don't know if it's a problem of transparency between departments. When someone asks you for a line item, what your utilities expenses are, why can't that be provided? This is what they were last year, this is what we're revenue-sharing to, year-to-date. So I don't know if it's just, and again, school committee's got a very big budget, and they probably do some cross-collateralization between line items, and that's fine. But it needs to be a fluid transition and transparent situation. We are here tonight with this problem because it's not. So that is the first correction we need to make. We need to repair the relationships, we need transparency on both sides. But more importantly, even tonight, there's questions that the finance committee is still waiting for, and they haven't got answers for. So, i- it goes both ways, and the confusion is both ways, 'cause some people wanna make sure that we don't short-change the children of this community. But the finance committee has a job, and by the way, they've done a wonderful job for many, many years to try and keep us solid and fluid. So, I'm certainly confused tonight, because I'm upset that this transparency issue is such a problem that we gotta sit here and fight over $200,000 that should've been rectified before we got here. Thank you, that's all I have to say, but it's frustrating.
Recognize the, uh, speaker in the lobby.
Sure, hello. Um, Kristin Faverd, uh, Precinct Seven. Um, I agree with everything that Mr. Consigli just said. However, um, I'm coming in here for the first time looking at these facts, and the facts that I'm hearing that are meaningful to me, and I'm a numbers person, is that we are spending much below state, um, per pupil expenses. Megan had a low-end, uh, estimate of 250 students anticipated, that's the low end of, of what we heard tonight. If I'm reading correctly, 9,000, 10,000 per pupil, correct? Means $2.5 million, right? So you add that to the budget, and that gets you back up to the level that this originally was at, and that includes nothing else. So that's the math of this. So that means that we are gonna be in, consistent with what we just heard from the Chair, much less per pupil. And I don't think we wanna do that. There are issues with transparency, I wanna hear more from the school system about how they're spending their money, and I'm sure others do too. But I also heard tonight that they have full discretion over how they spend their money. And if they are going to ask for more money because they have 250 more kids coming, and the math works, I say we do it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Beraroli, is it? Microphone one.
Ed Beraroli, Precinct Member Two, I move the question.
Motion to make, move the previous question, which again is an attempt to shut off debate, uh, is not debatable. I'll take a voice vote, if that is not unanimous, the individual sections will be polled. All those in favor of moving the previous question manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor of moving the previous question, please rise and remain standing until counted by the section monitor.
We've heard, we've heard from everybody. I'm up.
All those opposed to moving the previous question, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Section one.
Twelve, four, three against.
Section one, 12 in favor, three opposed. Section two.
Eighteen, four, three against.
I'm sorry, uh, (inaudible).
Eighteen, four, three against.
Eighteen in favor, three opposed. Section three.
Twelve in favor, four opposed.
Precinct three, 12 in favor, four opposed, precinct, uh, precinct. Section four.
Thirteen in favor, three opposed.
Thirteen in favor, three opposed. Section five.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Precinct five, section five, nine in favor, one opposed. Section six.
Six in favor, two opposed.
Section six, six in favor, two opposed. Section seven.
Sixteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct, uh, section seven, sixteen in favor, two opposed. Section eight.
Thirty-seven in favor, seven opposed.
Section eight, thirty-seven in favor, seven opposed.
And, Mr. Moderator, outside, one opposed.
One opposed. I also make that thirty-seven and eight.
(inaudible).
12, 13, 16, 20, 26. 22, 26. 123 having voted in favor, move your question, 20, 26 against. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, so we'll now take up the motion under, uh, line item 300, school department to appropriate $52,676,720. All those in favor will stand and remain standing until counted by the precinct, uh, by the section monitor.
(noise).
All those opposed, of those, stand and remain standing until counted by the monitors.
Uh-oh.
Are we voting to put the $200,000 back in, or keep it up?
Right now. (inaudible).
(inaudible).
Okay, um, section one.
(inaudible).
Section one, seven in favor, five opposed. Section two.
Thirteen in favor, four opposed.
Section two, thirteen in favor, four opposed. Section three.
(inaudible).
Section three, 10 in favor, five opposed. Section four.
Eleven in favor, five opposed.
Eleven in favor, five opposed. Section five.
Seven in favor, three opposed.
Section five, seven in favor, three opposed. Section six. I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Um, section seven. Section seven.
Fourteen in favor, five opposed.
Section seven, fourteen in favor, five opposed. Section eight. Chief. Section eight. Do you want to ever recount that, chief, or...
Mr. Moderator from section A, we're going to recount.
All right.
There's some confusion here on what the amendment was.
All right. What you're voting on is the motion to establish line item 300 in the finance committee report, school department to $52,676,720. In essence, voting to increase it by $200,000. In section eight only. All those in favor will stand until remained... and stand and be counted by the monitor.
Section eight. This is section eight.
Section eight is the lobby. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitor. Whenever you're ready to.
Mr. Moderator from section eight. Thirty-three in favor, fourteen opposed, and outside, one opposed.
Okay. All right. One hundred and three having voted in the affirmative, forty-three in the negative. The necessary majority has been obtained, and the motion is passed. The amendment is passed. Now we've got line item 210, I believe it was. Mr. Wheelock.
Hello?
Yep. Microphone three.
The front mic or this mic? Doesn't matter?
Right there. You're right there. Three.
Great. If I'm going to do this, I need to give you some duplicate forms or anything?
Just a piece of paper with what you want to put in for that line item, 210.
Hi there. Jamie Wheelock, precinct five. I thought it was a nice gesture at the beginning of the meeting that we spoke the names of some of the victims of police and vigilante violence. If you want to go even further than the words, you could...
First of all, let's talk about what you're proposing for line item 210. The amount in line item 210 is $6,395,800. Or you're talking about the total police department budget of $6,999,729, right?
Yes.
And you want to reduce that by $450,000?
Yes.
So your motion is, I'll help you out here, is to have line item, the total police department budget under 210. The total budget is to be reduced by $450,000, which will give us... All the mathematicians in the hall... I believe it's $6,540,729.
That sounds very close to what I was thinking.
Okay. All right. Speak on them, or why you want that item in there.
All right. Well, like I was saying, it was a great gesture that we could speak the names of some of those victims of police and vigilante violence. And if you want to go even further than those words, you could support this modest cut of $450,000 to the Milford Police Department budget. Yes, I know the Milford Police Department has attempted to be a good team player, and they've presented, I believe the word is level-funded budget. I'm sorry if I'm misrepresenting what it is. But one of the ways that they achieve that is they have several items on their budget that are so fantastically expensive, they can just choose to redefine the vehicle replacement schedule or any number of other big-budget items, and they can still increase lots of different department budget items within the police department budget and still come out with a level-funded budget. So I don't exactly know where the funding cuts would be felt within the police department, but I'm pretty sure that they can work it out without too much difficulty. For example, as of a month ago, I was aware that there were two openings for new replacement hires at the Milford Police Department. Milford could probably forego both of those hires. Also, the department could further reassess the vehicle replacement schedule additionally, especially if they don't hire those two officers. So I would have loved to have gone first before the school committee, and we could have freed up some available money that would have made that discussion go a little bit shorter. I'm not... This is approximately a 5% cut in the budget. It's not some crazy, totally unrealistic thing, and I think we could do it tonight. If you've been paying attention to the national news for the last six weeks, this is a common subject all across the country in big and small towns. So here goes. Now's your chance to vote about reducing the police budget in your town.
Yes, Mr. Hyatt.
Unfortunately, I didn't come. I came unprepared to respond directly to this reduction of the police department funds. But I can speak from a very well-informed source. I happen to be a member of the police subcommittee. Mr. Chakey is the chairman, but I don't see him here tonight. But I have had several discussions with the police chief on the department's budget. And I want to inform you that there is very little room in this budget. Very little room in this budget. Don't even think of going here, okay? I trust...I can share with you a working conversation I had with the police chief. Originally, back pre-COVID-19 pandemic, we were going to suggest that this town meeting fund four police vehicles this go-around because of the duties and what's happening and the size of the department has changed so much. In consultation with Mr. Taylor and Mr. Pagetti, we have pulled back that four already before this budget and reduced it to three going to this cycle. Let's be very careful here. I don't think three is enough, okay? Because what happens with police vehicles, they're very different than anything else. They get a lot of wear and tear and a lot of abuse. They run 24 hours a day. They chase people down. They have to be able to stop on a dime and have to be damn sure they steer in the right direction. Don't even think of going here because you're just asking for more problems. When a vehicle gets to a certain point in its life... I have been in the automobile business for 40 years. It gets to a point where it's no longer repairable. It gets to a point where the repairs exceed the value of the vehicle. And the other thing you do is you start putting the police officers in jeopardy in the type of vehicle that they're driving. So, yes, we were fortunate in the police department to get some relief in the salaries line items because of retirements. I said "some," but that doesn't cover it all. This is no place to look for a cut, okay? If there was, I would have found it before you found it, okay? The other thing that concerns me with the police budget is the educational side of the police budget. It's going to become very, very challenging as we go forward. With a lot of talk coming out of the governor's office about certification of police, we have no idea how much money we're going to need to spend per officer to have them state-certified. And I'm going to tell you right now that I don't think it's enough. I think we're coming back for some more, and it might be the October meeting or the January meeting. I don't...but I think...I'm just leaving that out there on the table for you. This is not $200,000 of a $53 million budget. This is a couple hundred thousand. And a police vehicle now used to be... We used to schedule police vehicles at $35,000. Now they cost us $50,000 to replace them. And we no longer bring police vehicles to this body for approval on an annual basis. That is an expense item that they have as a line item, and they just continue to replace three vehicles a year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator?
Any other vote that can be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I could. Tom O'Laughlin, precinct five. I have a little bit of experience with this particular budget. You have to keep in mind, this budget is the most personnel-intensified budget in the town. When I manage the budget, which is approximately 94% of the funds in this budget pay for personnel. So any monies you remove, you can say you're going to remove a vehicle. The fact remains is if you have a police vehicle with 113,000, 115,000 miles on it, you then have to add on to that the idle hours, the time that that vehicle's actually out there 24 hours a day. That vehicle and that officer are the people that are coming to save the person who's overdosed and has to have Narcan to save their life. That's the person that's coming to take care of the child that's choking. That's the person that's coming to make a difference in our lives. To suggest that because in Minneapolis, they're talking about defunding the police department, those are their ills. Those are their issues. You've not seen those issues here in Milford. The police officers here in Milford, they are part of this community. Most of them live in this community. They all care about this community. So as Mr. Hyatt spoke about the jeopardy of the officers if the vehicles aren't functioning properly, the jeopardy is also ours because we're the people that they're coming to help. So to suggest that you just go cut vehicles and it's all okay, all right, then we'll put them all on footbeats, and hopefully they can run fast enough to get to your home. I would ask you to please vote against this amendment, this article.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Visconti. Microphone two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, precinct eight. First, let me say that, but not... if it was not for the quick and professional action of the Milford Police Department and other PEBLOC safety people, my son may not be alive today. Also, if it was not, once again, for their quick and speedy and professional action, I may not...I would not be standing here before you. Please do not hold that against them. If, however, out of any line item in the budget where you might want to cut funds, the police department is the absolutely last place we want to cut funds. We count on our men and women in blue to protect and serve us. And as far as I'm concerned, they do. The Milford Police Department does the best job of any surrounding town, maybe any town in the state, or maybe any town in the country. Please do not cut their budget. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to establish the total police department line item budget at $6,549,729. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is defeated. I now need a motion to put a line item in the budget for the police department. And I would suggest that motion has been... wants to present that motion. Zach, you present that motion to put in the police department budget the total amount of $6,999,729. Motion made, seconded. Any vote that can be heard on the line item that was originally submitted by the finance committee in the report? If not, the question comes upon that line item. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I believe you might have it. Article five, to see if the town...
I have it.
Will.
All right. The motion has been made that the town vote to... by Selectman Kincaid, to enact certain measures and set forth herein, which are presented each year in the annual town meeting. A, that the town vote to authorize the... Motion made and seconded. We waive the reading of the remainder of the motion since exactly as appears in your warrant that you've all received a copy of. Any vote that can be heard? Motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Question now comes upon the motion of Selectman Kincaid to enact certain measures as set forth. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six. Article six. Yeah. Okay. Reno Deluzio, out in the lobby. Reno? Is that Reno Deluzio or not? Reno, can you hear me out in the lobby? Reno Deluzio. Can you recognize?
Yes.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can see you. Everybody can see you.
Okay. On behalf of the Walden Woods Home Motors Association, I move to pass over Article six.
Motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Does any vote that can be heard? The motion pass over? You're not hearing none? Question comes upon the motion to pass over Article six. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those, no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article seven. Oh, boy. Article seven is Selectman O'Laughlin's motion that the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,875 from the excess and deficiency account to supplement account 610-5110 to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within a collective bargaining agreement between the library union and the town of Milford, including but not limited to wages and salaries. Does the finance committee have a recommendation on that?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Yes. Mr. Bertorelli.
Ladies and gentlemen of the town meeting, Edward Bertorelli, chairman of the Library Board of Trustees. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank the town, the town finance committee and the subcommittee for the support of the library. And I also want to mention that on July 7th, the town library will be reopening under the COVID restrictions and guidelines. But the library will be reopening July 7th. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard on the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, this article seeks to fund the costs of the items contained in the collective bargain agreement between the town of Milford and the library union. The additional cost, ladies and gentlemen, is $45,875.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Move to pass over Article eight?
Motion made and seconded. We pass over Article eight. Attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article eight. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article eight is passed over. Article nine. Chris? On microphone 2.
Aye, Christopher Pillar moved that the town vote to transfer the sum of $180,000 from the excess and deficiency account to be added to fund 4081, the Woodland School Building Committee account, authorized by Article 2 of the February 10, 2014 special town meeting, to be used for the final closeout of the Woodland School project and to rescind $2,896,929.18 of authorized and unused bonds as voted at the February 10, 2014 special town meeting.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Chris?
Ladies and gentlemen, this motion presented to you tonight is to close out, to close out the Woodland School project. The project came in well under budget. When we were going for our final bonding, we anticipated a reimbursement of $1,500,000 from the MSBA. When we actually received our final reimbursement, it was only for $1,320,000. This transfers to clear the deficit between what we bonded and what was reimbursed. The second part of the article is to rescind the remaining unused authorized debt that was voted upon at the February 10, 2014 special town meeting. This will officially close out the project. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is passed unanimously. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
On behalf of the sponsor, I move to pass over this article.
Motion made, and seconded. We pass over Article 10. An attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Any vote that can be heard on the article, on the motion? If not, the question comes on the motion to pass over Article 10. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move to pass over this article.
Motion made, and seconded. We pass over Article 11. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to pass over Article 11? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 11. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, will you read the article?
Mr. Stuckman Wallace moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of $140,000 from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized for purposes of remediating any hazardous materials, demolishing any structures on property located at 72 Depot Street, and removing and disposing of the demolished debris at an appropriate location. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Stuckman Wallace.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article seeks to appropriate the sum of $140,000 to demolish the existing structures located at 72 Depot Street. This will also include remediation, any hazardous materials on the site, and removing any and all debris from the site. The town building commissioner and highway surveyor inspected this property and determined that it was unsafe, it was in an unsafe condition, and is in such a state of disrepair as to cause danger to the general public. Town officials contacted the owner and commenced discussions with the attorney for the owner, requesting he either repair or demolish the property. The owner did not cooperate in removing the structure, and therefore, the town determined it is in the best interest of the public to undertake the demolition of the property. Once the property is demolished, the town will place a lien on the property for the total cost of the demolition and remediation of the hazardous materials.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Wheelock. Microphone 3.
Hello, Jamie Wheelock, Precinct 5. I think earlier in the evening I misrepresented what article could be used to free up some money. In fact, it was this Article 12 that could be used. This project was ill-advised from the offset when it was championed by a previous chairman of the board of selectmen and can easily be left in its current state for another year, 18 months, whatever. We certainly don't have to proceed with the demolition of this project today, or at least pass the money for doing it today, to commence with the demolition and all the related stuff. I also feel that the sum of money that's being talked about here is woefully inadequate to address the total scope of that project. FinCom's abbreviated report about the financial situation of the town and COVID-19's impact for the town's budget for the whole year is kind of a rosy picture. And there is a really good chance things will be different if COVID comes back with a second wave or any number of ideas. And to some extent, that's why the school committee, or why the FinCom was so fussy about the $200,000, because they, FinCom knows they need a bigger cushion and margin to accommodate for surprises. So, it just is amazing that we, the town, chose to forego $35,000 worth of wage increases, little bumps and promotions for all those people. I think it was Article 2 where we passed over giving people raises so that we could save $35,000. Yet we're about to commence on what they're calling a $140,000 project, which I think is going to be well north of $180,000, to knock down somebody's property that's not even ours yet. And that we've done a lot of rodent control about. And yes, keeping the rodents' population down should probably be maintained. But leaving the building in its current state would probably be fine. I hope you people will oppose proceeding with the spending of this money for this project. That can wait.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Was favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote that can be heard?
Moderator?
Yes. Town Council Board.
Charles Boddy, at large, member. This is a particularly problematic property for the town. It's also a problem for the owners. There's litigation, there's estate issues. But most important, this is a property that was called to the town's attention by people who live in the neighborhood. People who look out at it every day. People who suffer from its blight. People who have to deal with the rodents. The town has already incurred significant expenses. We've made every effort to order the repairs and the remediation. We've now incurred the costs of having folks go in, determine what the problems are in terms of asbestos and other contaminants. We've determined that the building is so structurally unsound that it is not capable of being remediated. The whole building is going to have to come down. The debris from the demolition is going to be removed in what they call hot condition. In other words, it's all going to be considered contaminated, and it's going to be removed from the town after demolition to a site which is licensed to take the hazardous materials. The town is incurring ongoing costs in terms of its rodent control. The town is incurring ongoing costs in terms of the fencing that is stopping people from getting into the building because it was not secure. The roof on the building is gone. One wall is already wavering and beginning to collapse. The building is an eyesore. And if we, the town, cannot address this one building, which is in such an unstable condition that it's liable to fall at any time, then we're not going to be able to take care of smaller issues within the town. Albeit, this is perhaps a pilot project of this type, but it's one for which we can expect fully to recover money either by ownership of the property through tax title foreclosure or simply levying the expenses of the demolition, including the expenses we've already gone through on the property owner. The fact that we would vote to approve this does not foreclose our ability to continue to work with the property owner to try to bring about a resolution of this that gets the town paid for the monies we've already expended, while at the same time making sure that the property is safe and is not a blight on the neighborhood and isn't bringing down property values in that vicinity. The last thing we need is for a fire to erupt in that building and some firefighter goes and is injured because he's fighting a fire in a building that shouldn't have been there. Or for some child or some homeless person to get inside, or for it to become an attraction for other nuisances. In addition, at the back of the building, there are a number of vehicles which stand on town property. And there are a number of vehicles which are left unregistered for more than a decade that are on the water company's land. If the town eventually buys the water company and gains title to that property next door, then those vehicles will be our problem. In the long run, this doesn't foreclose our ability to continue to work with the present owners to try to bring around a solution that benefits everybody and costs very little. But nonetheless, it is something that the people of Milford have asked the town to address. And we, the town, are going out checking, sighting, erecting fences, getting contracts for exterminations, all of which is an ongoing monitoring expense for the town. And I would ask you for your support in this article. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just one quick question. I was wondering if the property is owned outright or is there a lender involved? And if there is a lender involved, has the town approached the lender to remedy the situation? Thank you.
Any unable to answer that question?
Charles?
Yes.
We've only recently become aware that there is a mortgage company that may be involved. However, there's litigation involved regarding the proceeds that, from the insurance that resulted after the fire in the building years ago. So, there is a, there is a mortgage company involved. There are other ways to address this. We need the access to the funding in case those pathways fail.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is passed unanimously. Article 13. Mr. Taylor, yes. Okay. Zachary Taylor is moving that the town vote to close out certain special article accounts to the general funds of the town. Town meeting Article 7, October 2011. The concession stand, the balance to be closed out is $11,000. Motion made, and seconded. We waive the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the Finance Committee report that you have. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Taylor?
Town meeting members, this article takes a look at pass-approved articles where the objective has been met within appropriation. Any remaining balance is no longer necessary to be encumbered. By closing these budgets, the undesignated fund balance will increase and ultimately increase whatever free cash may be available for fiscal year '20. The total today, your total today, is $115,453.09. I urge your support.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 14. Zachary Taylor is moving that the town vote to transfer funds between certain line items voted under Article 4 of the May 20, 2019 annual town meeting. For the purp, let me finish it. For the purpose of making funds available on line item accounts and sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year 2020. Motion made by Mr. Vilani to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the article as exactly as appears in the Finance Committee report. It is. And therefore, I'll take a motion on. All those in favor of waiving the reading manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 14, Zach.
Thank you. When Article 4 is voted, as you did earlier tonight, it is an estimate. Department heads try their best to keep within their budgets, but sometimes circumstances such as unexpected repairs or retirement puts actual expenditures over budget. Likewise, other departments often come in well under budget. This article cleans up the budgets within existing appropriation. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no.